May 2020. This evening, as always, let us begin with a pledge to our flag, followed by a silent moment of prayer or reflection. Let's leave them to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. If you want them, please be seated. Just to the clarification of the general public, we went into, the board went into an executive session at 2:00 PM this afternoon for roughly two hours to discuss different purposes. One was a grievance, several grievances, and the other was some contractual items with an upcoming contract that we're going to get involved in. So with that said, we'll move right along to our new business this evening. Under new business, number one. For review and signature to the board, we have three cemetery deeds. Motion?
Motion to sign?
Second.
I have a motion to sign and a second, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
And Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Okay, the board, the chair votes yes, so that's a five to one in favor of. Number two Comcast Cable Communications LLC submitting CTV Form 200, a financial balance sheet, and a CT Form 400 Statement of Ownership.
Information.
Motion to file for information, and I have a second on that. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous, Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that's five in the affirmative. Number three Nile S. Connors Bios Franchise Service Manager Horizon submitting pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 166A, Section 8, Verizon New England Inc., CTV Form 200 and CTV Form 400, and also submitting a copy of Verizon New England's Condensed Financial Statements 2019, including a statement of operations and balance sheet. Information?
Information.
I have a motion for fileless information and a second, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous? Oh, I'm sorry, one abstention from Mr. Hajar, is that correct?
No, no.
Okay, then it's five to, five zip. That brings us to number four Russ McGuire, now an airport manager, submitting for signature of the chairman of the board, mass DOT grant assurances for equipment, which is a battery-powered lawnmower.
Motion to sign?
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman.
Unanimous, Mr. Plasko?
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Go ahead.
Mr. Hajar?
I, I do have a question, though.
By all means.
Where is this, where is this going to be stored? At the DPW or up on one of the anchors?
I would imagine it's going to be, I don't have the information, but it would tell me that it would probably be housed at the airport. Mr. Plasko, you want to jump in?
Yes, it'll be at the airport and it'll be in their new facilities that they just recently occupied.
Exactly.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you.
No, exactly, that was the answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Hajar, you voted in the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Plasko, you voted in the negative, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the vote passes quarter one with one in the negative, which is Mr. Plasko. That brings us to number five Ann Sherwin, Operations Support Services for National Grid, submitting copy of a frequently asked question sheet, city notification letter, and sample notice being sent to the abutters of the following addresses of Norwood, number 10 through number 130 Pleasant Street, number two, number two to 28 Oxford Road, number 10 to number 74 Vowood Circle, regarding upcoming construction work. Construction expected to begin on or about April 27, 2020. Anticipated completion will be August 31 of 2020. This is just to notify the neighbors that some roadwork is going to take place with National Grid.
File as information to the board?
I have a motion, on the motion, sir.
Just a question, it says the begin date was April 27th. Have they begun work? I assume it's been pushed off.
I believe it has been pushed up, it's on or about, so.
Yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Hajar, you had something?
Yes, on the streets listed, Tony Mark Myan or you have looked at the streets to, are they on our list to be paved and we would delay until after they're done and to make sure that they're not touching ones that you've already just completed?
Correct, we always try to do that, but even if we've just completed a street and they have a right to access their gas infrastructure, unfortunately, there's, there's not much we can do.
Right, I would just want to make sure that if they do have to after we've done it, it is for an emergency, not as far as a planned project. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we, we have motion and second, did we take a vote on that?
Not as yet.
Moving right along. Discussion.
Oh, we did not take a vote, Mr. Chairman.
We did not take the vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that's five to one, five to nothing. Next on our agenda is proposed FY 2021 budget discussion for review of the board, and we'll start that off with Mr. Mazuko, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll take the board through the FY 21 operating budget and the capital budget. Just a moment to get geared up here. So I'll go through the FY 21 budget. The board, as you know, had submitted a little over 25, 30 questions to me in advance. We have provided the answers to those questions to the board. I thought there were some great questions and a great chance for some dialogue. We're gonna go through the FY 21 budget. I'd ask that if the chair is okay with it, we hold questions to the end and then I'd be more than happy to take any questions at the end and then go from there to any discussion the board may have.
Yes, sir, that'd be appropriate.
Thank you. So a quick overview is the board, anyone watching at home can see on the screen, the total general, the total budget coming in at about $206 million, an increase of $4.1 million over last year total. General government expenses are up 3.5% consistent with the override pledge. There's a key investment being made in the school department of upwards of $1 million to address some substantial auto district special ed costs that have hurt us this year. The school district is also being allocated an additional $570,000 by the state through the Student Opportunities Act money to address core needs in the district. The school department budget is otherwise up 3.5% and is consistent with the override pledge. We are investing in a combined facilities department to find in this critical need for the community. So that's probably the highlight of this budget is that we are finally moving forward on an important need for the community. With the included, the proposed budget is a pension catch-up of $250,000. So that is an additional contribution to our pension fund. And as the board knows, that's not a increase in pension benefits that are being given out. It's just us contributing more to our pension fund to try to meet or exceed our pension full funding schedule. We're currently at around 82% fully funded. The last time the town was doing this, it was very successful. We were looking to do it routinely over the next several years to take advantage of the availability of cash to make these investments and eventually hit that full funding plus. We're also continuing our OPEB contribution of $250,000. I'll talk about some of the highlights in a moment as well, but we are continuing to separate out utility funds into enterprise funds so we can separate our accounting out and make sure that we are fully costing the cost of our utility funds to the actual utilities themselves. So a couple of things on the budgetary and economic impacts of COVID-19. One of the things that's important to remember is that local and state economy, local economies tend to trend differently than state or national economies. Property tax collections remain largely stable, although slightly decreased during recessionary environments. Meals and rooms taxes will be impacted, but remember that that total amount of money is only about 1.7 million in a $205 million budget. Excise taxes, we'll predict, we'll take a short-term dip, and building permits will as well. The FY 21 budget projections for these numbers are 91% of last year's actuals. So we could actually come in at 10% less than last year's numbers and still meet our targets. So that's actually a good positive, a bit conservative in our revenue projections. Now, state aid is the only other revenue source subject to potential fluctuation once the state finalizes a budget. 9.7 million for schools and 5.4 million for UGGA or unrestricted general government aid. Even during the 2008 recession, the school number didn't decrease. Our real threat is when our revenues outside of Prop 2.5 can't grow, we then start to face constraints on the budget. But UGGA did drop a little bit during the 2008 recession and remained flat for a bit. But school aid, you're usually held harmless. What will happen with the Student Opportunities Act, we don't know. But I'm not as concerned with those numbers, even though the state is facing a revenue shortfall. We will have to wait until the fall to really see where we are. FY 22 will be much more of a challenging budget where we may see flat revenues with 21, and that's always our concern, is when revenues are flat, we know that our expenses grow, that's when the budget starts getting constrained. So growth in those other revenues is critical to maintaining the budget. So some of the positives in FY 21 budget, revenues were still strong going into March. A return to a new normal will allow no major drops in this area. We had collected exactly where we intended to throughout the end of March for a lot of our local receipts. And I mentioned at the bottom here, we did about $65,000 worth of building permits in April. So that's not the value of construction in April. That's a slightly lower than average number, but given the wider shutdown in Boston and Cambridge and given everything that's going on, the fact that we still did $67,000 worth of permits in April is pretty incredible. We're putting $1.1 million into stabilization, so that's a combination of the override stabilization and our traditional deposit into our stabilization fund. We're entering the budget year with $100,000 in unspent levy capacity, and that's even after increasing the levy $40,000 to account for new exemptions if we do end up going forward in the fall with some of the senior and veteran exemptions as well as the senior work-off program, which is only a minor cost out of the levy. As I mentioned, we're putting an additional $250,000 into the pension fund. New growth up to this point of the year had been strong. Even though Moderna is on a TIF, their numbers should go up. We have two combo complexes and 100% of Avalon will be on the tax roll. The buildings, as you know, are assessed where they are as of June 30th. So those are some positives in the budget as we move forward. You'll notice that the total overall budget, my number's slightly different here due to a rounding difference between pulling it from Munis in my spreadsheet. But you'll notice that the budget overall, it doesn't appear to have that much growth in it. The numbers between FY 19 and 20 are a little funky. If you look at this spreadsheet, it doesn't necessarily include all of the, the revenues and the impact of the override, but we're looking at about a $4 million budget growth overall. I'm gonna jump right into the department budgets, and if you'll forgive me to just be able to read through this a little bit. This is the general department budget view, so you'll notice some of our account categories have changed a little bit. This is part of the conversion for our new Munis accounting system, and it's compliant with the state's EUMIS or Uniform Massachusetts Accounting System, system of accounting, accounting. I believe that's a question Mr. Plasko had put in about why it seemed to be a different number or were moved around, some of them forming with the state's accounting system. So out of all the budgets considered under general government and that exposed public safety and public work, so this is sort of our town hall budgets, if you will. There's two items I wanted to draw attention to. One is you'll notice a lot of increasing the cost of information technology. That's largely as we fully onboard the regular cost of the Munis software system. So each year for the next two to three years, we'll be finalizing as we bring on all the different software packages that we've purchased. We're bearing the cost of that in that IT budget, so you'll probably notice an increase there next year and then. And then down the bottom, notice 198 EG COLA to be allocated. That is our Article 1, if you will. So we've only settled contracts with police patrol and police superiors. We are putting aside a reserve for a potential COLA or other contractual obligations as a result of that general government COLA to be allocated. Public safety is actually a fairly vanilla budget. Police, fire, building commissioner, public safety, building maintenance. Two items to call out here in the police budget is included the COLA as we have settled the police and police patrol contracts. The public safety, building maintenance, numbers are up quite a bit. The building is starting to age and we have several years in a row run short or run out of money for some of the utilities and repairs in that building, so we're attempting to address that. And on the fire department budget, relatively stable. We are continuing to increase substitution. I know that's always a point of contention, but we want to make sure we're actually budgeting for the amount of substitution that we will use in a given year. So we're continuing to increase that number. At some point, we will hit that saturation point where we've budgeted to absorb the full potential of the building. Definitely, there's always a discussion about whether or not that's where we want to be, but as we continue to spend at that level, we should make sure that the appropriate amount is budgeted. Public safety, otherwise seeing no major changes this given year. The public works budget, I'd like to point out just a couple of things. As we all know, our trash contract will be ending, I think it's another two years. That's something we'll have to sit down and have a discussion with as we get closer to that. Current contract being well, well designed by Mr. Howard, and I believe Mr. Maloney might have been on that panel. So that will serve us well for another year or two. Our April, our March numbers were not much different than normal. We're waiting anxiously to see our April numbers to see if the amount of folks at home is swaying where our collection is, but we'll be taking a look at that. The four items, the four items I have highlighted here, it looks like a great big cost drop in those areas. That is not necessarily the cost drop. The water and sewer costs are now being allocated similar to an enterprise fund where we have all of our water and sewer costs in one area. Now, we started doing this last year with some light department expenses. Because these expenses were integrated into the general government, those were taken out and they were taken out of the 3.5% that our revenue or our budget is based on. So that didn't provide any relief to the general government budget. By removing those expenses out of the general government budget, it actually cost me to have to cut about another $20,000 or $30,000 out of different areas in the general government budget to get us within 3.5% cap. Other than that, public works as an operating budget is fairly stable, and we'll discuss those water and sewer budgets in just a moment. Categories five and six, health and human services and culture and budget. There's a slight adjustment, the health and human services budget is relatively flat. There's a slight adjustment to the council and aging budget due to some grant changes where they had been able to pay for some of their expenses out of their grant. The state does continue to increase the amount of money the senior center receives through their unrestricted grant, but they do change what it can be paid for. It really should be to add services on, we have been putting some utility costs against it. The CIP, which we'll talk about, calls for a sedan for senior transport options. Part-time per diem driver will be used from, funded from reductions in the transfer program, which is not being fully utilized, as well as COA grant funds to run this as a pilot program for a couple of years. We have a substantial need for senior transport pre-COVID-19 and particularly to medical facilities. Now, I know some members on the board feel that that shouldn't be a business that we're in and that the purpose of the van is specifically for those items. We find that if we had a sedan, a lot of the medical transit issues can be better, better handled with the sedan rather than trying to account for different appointments using a van and people going to different places. We're also in a weird transportation system where if somebody wanted to use the ride, which is the T sort of free transit system, that ride doesn't take you, that won't take a Norwood resident to Foxborough. So we can't go right over the line in Foxborough. So if you're a senior, you would actually, and you need to transport to a medical appointment in Foxborough, you actually would need to get the ride to take you to the line, and then there's another service that takes you from there to the building. So it creates a, a serious issue for us to help get seniors to their medical appointments. And it's a critical need we have in the senior center, and it's one of the most important things we have to keep seniors in their homes, as well as seniors' age. Those of you who have taken care of older family members will certainly know that getting the medical appointments ends up being a challenge for the family. So this is a service we are excited to look at providing in a way we think we can help a lot of seniors out in the community. Other than that, there are no potential, no large changes. The veterans budget could always increase along with a need in veteran services if we see a longer-term recession, but that's a mandatory expense and is offset by 75% cost reimbursement from the Commonwealth. The recreation budget is seeing a position reallocated from HR to handle increased programming and events. There's no net increase in headcount. We have, he had a budgeted, benefited part-time position in HR. It is vacant, we have a 10% in the position. We're reallocating that or proposing to reallocate that to the recreation budget. As you know, they have seen an explosion in programming and services, and we want to continue that and try to allocate our resources where we can. In a perfect world, we would add positions to every department that needs additional support, but we can't do that, so we're just looking to move and reshape what's in the budget to try to make best use of the dollars that we have and help out the departments that we think can make the best use of it. The recreation department, not only are they expanding programming and running a lot of different community programs, they're more and more being called to assisting community events where it used to be they did just sort of one or two. They're now a, a form, they're now taking on the role that formerly a lot of volunteers would take on, but a lot of our committees are starting to age out, and the rec department is picking up more and more of the work for a lot of these different community events that we come to know and love every year. Light department and broadband, you'll see the total light department budget there. A point of note, it does appear that it's going down. That's a change in the purchase power amount, and as the board is familiar, but for anyone at home who isn't, that's the dollar amount of power that we purchase every year. That number tends to fluctuate by several million dollars based on our projected power needs. It doesn't mean that we're necessarily spending more or less. It's just that we're purchasing less power or in some cases, we're purchasing more power. So this is one of the other reasons we want to separate out completely the light department and the water and sewer from the regular operating budget is it creates some distortions in the numbers where it's tough to tell whether the overall budget is going up or down and where some of our other numbers are going up or down. The light department is seeing a drop in usage from commercial, commercial clients as a result of COVID-19. There's an increase in the residential load, however, as I think everyone knows, the residential load is smaller than the commercial load. Broadband budget is, actually shows down quite a little bit with their capital expenses dropping, which is their depreciation. Incidentally, the OO6 category there in the light department is their depreciation expense. It's considered a capital expense. I provided the board with balance amounts for broadband and light depreciation and rate shock. So a couple of items on the light department budget. Rate setting information will be coming to the board soon. The proposal will include an increase to the meter charge to begin building a cash-on-hand fund balance. This is critical to stabilizing the light department's finances, to moving towards a truly segregated fund, to moving towards a AAA credit rating. And it was also recently recommended by our outside accounting firm that assists in the DPU reports and our light department public utility accounting. We will in three years pay off the light department, the large light department bond that will allow us to start moving towards a good position, including some rate relief, fixing the rate shock fund, which that number needs to grow quite a bit, and utilizing less depreciation for ordinary capital. You need to maintain, we do use, we are allowed to use depreciation for ordinary capital, but we need to build depreciation up as well. We could face a $5 or $10 million cost if a substation were to go down, and we need to be able to make those purchases immediately and keep the power flowing. So we'd like to be able to do that once we have that bond paid off. It'll be a five-year period of allocating those savings. We'll be able to put the light department in a very, very good position. The broadband build-out bond is paid off soon as well. That will allow us to invest in some items such as fiber to the home and a few other great products to continue our broadband going strong. Broadband annual growth continues, profitability continues to increase annually, and our total market share continues to increase. Our numbers are slightly down in April. Obviously, we're not doing any installations until later this month, but we do have quite a bit queued up. We're always proud of our light and broadband department in particular. Darrell Hanson has been the one who set up a lot of our phone bridge that we used during the initial couple of weeks of this emergency. Was also able to work with the school department to provide internet access to low-income families who needed internet access to continue their distance learning. So kudos to everyone at the light department, but in particular to Darrell for the great work that he does and continues to do for us and for our profitable broadband division. Water and sewer budget overview, it looks like a giant increase from the prior year, but again, that's just a cost allocation. Rate setting will be coming to the board soon. We may be having a rate increase roughly 4% or 5%, we're looking at what the final number will be. The proposal will also include a meter increase fee to segregate, build a cash-on-hand fund, and I explained that for the light department. When we are trying to move to an enterprise fund, we need a fund balance there ready to start. You could one year transfer money out of free cash, but we need the water sewer fund and the electric fund to operate on their own without any subsidy from the general fund to make sure that there's no subsidy from them to the general fund. And they need cash to be able to operate. Right now, we run on all one fund. We will have the opportunity through the MWRA to delay debt service payments for one year to mitigate the rate impact. This will likely cover a portion of the rate impact and offset any projected losses we would have as a result of reduced water because of COVID-19 and what's been a wet spring, partially, as I said, partially COVID-related, partially wet spring. Water sewer rates are being kept low. We need to look at segregating them out so we can make sure that we are every year raising enough money to cover water and sewer expenses and that there's a fund on hand to cover any losses. Otherwise, when we take a loss in water and sewer, it comes out of what will otherwise be free cash. Now, the opposite is true, if it has a surplus, that does go into free cash, but you can always transfer out that surplus when you have a certain amount to transfer it right back into your infrastructure. But we just want to clean up our accounting, clean up our books, and begin segregating our funds. It takes time, it's not going to happen overnight. We need to build up balances and we need to work at it strategically each year, making another step towards doing it. And it is one of those things that we're going to have to do to build our fund balances the way we want to and to eventually get to a AAA credit rating. As part of the capital improvement plan that will largely be taken up in the fall, there's going to be a request to do some large borrowing for both roadwork and water work to invest in our infrastructure. It's absolutely critical to invest in our infrastructure regardless of the economic condition. Infrastructure investment is always worth it. And as I said, we must continue to segregate funds. Couple items on the shared cost budget, and really, we should rename this to be a fixed cost budget, but that's just a title. The top line there, you'll notice the facilities department. That is the creation of our facilities department. We will finally have a centralized facilities department in the town beginning in the month of July. We can't wait. The team that is gonna be in place is in really good shape and they're really excited about it. There are great, great things for the town to come and a lot of dollar savings down the road for the town to come as well. A couple other items I'll point out. State assessments and charges is something that you're likely new to seeing being budgeted in this fashion. And this is just a request of the Department of Revenue that we should be budgeting both our state revenue and our state assessment and charges. What we would always do in the past is just budget the net of the revenue after all the charges. They want us to book the full revenue and the full charges. It's really just accounting that they want us to take place. It has no net impact on the budget, other than those charges and revenues go up and down. Regional schools, you'll notice a slight increase in students at Blue Hills has led to this number, as well as the full burdening of their debt service payment. I call attention to this because if you look at the current FY 20 proposed Blue Hills number and the FY 2018 number, we've had a substantial increase in that line over the last couple of years. I don't think there's anything that's not being done correctly. It's just worth noting in the overall discussion over funding education and to what level we're funding it and where our resources are going, there is this additional now million and a half dollar line in our budget for two other schools, mainly Blue Hills and slightly Norfolk Aggie, but it has increased precipitously over the last several years. And second to last two things, 951, the reserve fund. We were able to increase that a little bit, consistent with our financial policies that the three boards agreed to, to maintain compliance with our own internal policies, which is also a good financial move. And again, between override stabilization and our regular stabilization contribution, $1.1 million going into stabilization. Final thoughts on the FY 21 operating budget. FY 21 is relatively stable, revenue loss can be absorbed and dealt with. FY 22 is much harder to predict, the state of the economy, the condition of the Commonwealth's finances. Key investments continue and expand during the FY 21 budget. Before we go into capital, I'll pause here, and if the chairman would like, I'll take any questions on the FY 21 budget. And if the board is so inclined, we'll be looking for a vote for the board on the light department budget, which does need to be statutorily approved separate by the board in their capacity as light commissioners.
Okay, I'll start on my screen here. Mr. Plasko, do you have any questions?
Um, not generally. And what Mr. Mazuko just went over, I was gonna call attention and make a motion on the light department. I don't know if you wanted to do that now or later. I realize that we need to do that. If you want to see if there's any questions first. The other question I had was on the so-called Article 1, the increased COLA. What are we, what are we doing for the non-unit people? In other words, we usually agree on what we're gonna give them for an increase, and I don't see why, if we're waiting for a couple of unions that might take half a year longer to settle, why they should have to go without their pay increase.
We have factored that into that number, so at some point, we can bring that. We not dealt with COVID, we would have been a little bit further along in our bargaining. We are scheduling sessions out the next couple of weeks to continue work. Everything was just placed on hold in the result of COVID-19, but there is a estimate factored in there to that. So if you'd like, at the next board meeting, we can bring that proposal to the board. COVID-19, but there is a estimate factored in there to that. So if you'd like at the next board meeting, we can bring that proposal to the board and so vote on it.
Yeah, because my concern is that, at least in the past, the wording associated with that has been that it has to go back to town meeting for appropriation. And if we're budgeting it and they're non-unit people, why are they waiting for the unit people to settle? Once we determine what amount we're going to give them, of course, we haven't actually done that.
We can bring that before the board.
That's all at the moment. Otherwise, the questions we submitted and answered, I think mine answered. I'm okay for the moment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll come back to the question about voting the light department budget as soon as I see there's no other further questions. Mr. Haja, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. So Tony, thanks for answering all those questions. But I guess follow up on a few of them. I'm concerned about the Section 175 regarding the community planning budget. So I understand what you're trying to do. I guess number one, I would think that we should be made aware of like organizational changes that you're trying to make. And clearly, this is, this is one. I'm not sure I can ever remember us rewriting an existing employee's position description with the intent of moving him or her along. I really think we're setting ourselves up for something not, not well for the town. And I think there are there are two issues with regards to what you're trying to do. And that is have a planning function take on the role of a conservation agent as well. And I think they're two distinct jobs. And I can also say that I'm not in favor of what you're doing right now, until we have additional discussion about it. I certainly don't want to take up a long time with my other colleagues on this call, but I would hope that we could have a follow-up discussion about to see how this is going to play out because I think what Al does based on the needs of the Conservation Commission are exactly right. And some of the things that you're saying are the planning position could take on is really not meant for conservation agent. So again, I'm not saying I want to take up everybody's time, but I really right now, I'm just, I'm not convinced that this is the right move to make, but I would like to talk about it.
Sure. So the current agent position is a 20-hour-a-week benefits eligible position. And it has stopped, that position has stopped doing any administrative support, which it was originally supposed to do for the board. That's been dumped on the ZBA admin assistant, who now does that eight to 10 hours a week. The position does not engage in any grant writing. It does not engage in any project management. There was no technology being utilized until earlier this year, and there's no mapping or planning that gets done. So it's really, it was originally a 1099 position that was converted to a salaried position a number of years ago. So it's really not working out for the $40,000 we spend for the part-time position. It's an awful lot to just provide some advice to the Conservation Commission. When we do send most things to peer review. So what we've done is we've crafted a job description that includes those responsibilities as well as some needs in the planning department, as well as some of the administrative responsibilities to shift the burden back to that staff position. So for a little bit more money, we're going to be able to get a little bit more bang for our buck. Increase in the headcount, we're just trying to better use the staff that we have. You know, an agent position is challenging. We wouldn't need a full-time just agent. But a full-time body handling all of those items makes a lot more sense from a overall responsibility standpoint and the ability of being adaptive and getting into other areas. The nature and work of conservation is changing. And as we look at some of the projects we've embarked on, grabbing the St. Street slot, some of the CPA projects that are conservation related, those projects need to fall under somewhere, and we also need some assist in managing them going forward. And if we want to continue to acquire green space and open space, we're going to need a different kind of staff support. And right now, there's actually, there's grant funds out there for some of the park work and other things that we want to do. We currently have a position that is incapable and of doing that within the current job description. And by making a change to the job description, the current incumbent is certainly welcome to apply for that. But we're trying to get the best use of our taxpayer dollars and be a little bit more efficient as we build out some of our planning functions. And that's a planning development, community development, whichever term you prefer to use.
Most of the functions that you just described that are basically planning in nature, if you want, if the planning department needs a half-time employee, then let's put that forward. I don't hear the Conservation Commission complaining about what Al does today. And some of the stuff that you say he doesn't do, he doesn't do delineation because that's done at a cost of the applicant. And then if there's disagreement between Al and the applicant, there's a peer review also that gets paid by the applicant, not by the town. So we want us, we want now the town to take on that responsibility, which comes at a cost. I think this needs to be vetted out better in a discussion. And I still think that it's a little bit unfair to the existing employee that we're now changing the position description that has been held by him for quite some time, knowing that he's not going to be able to comply with things that he's never been asked to do before. So
He'd be welcome to apply for that position if he'd be interested in doing it. Sometimes organizational changes that are in the best interest of the organization. Two part-time positions would require us to have two benefit packages. And that's what we're trying to avoid to avoid that increase in headcount. It's also sometimes tough to find part-time staff who are willing to stick around for positions like this. We also, the amount of work that can get done in the winter when there's snow on the ground, it's a much slower period of time. So this has always been a base 20-hour position that has received 20 hours, whether there's any work to be done or not. So we're just looking to be more efficient with our time and actually be able to get more done. As you know, David, you put a lot into a job description so that you can make sure the individual covers it. Whether or not they actually end up doing it always ends up being determined by the system on the ground. Now, the
No, but Tony, there's a difference, there's a difference between taking an existing employee and rewriting their position description that basically writes them out of the job. I just don't see how that benefits the town. I understand if it was a brand-new position or Al retired and say, hey, this is our opportunity to rewrite it and move forward with a more comprehensive position that can benefit both the Conservation Commission and the planning department. I just don't see how this is treating him fairly.
Well, we budgeted for that position to stay on and they're more, more than welcome to apply for the position.
Mr. Chair. Sir. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mizuko. When, when back a little ways, when we, when we discussed adding the assistant planners position, I brought up the point that we were deleting the secretary. And the comments were made over and over that the two people that would then be there would take care of all administrative issues and that wouldn't be a problem. I term this type of thing the down payment plan. That now we're looking for someone else to in fact do the administrative functions.
Sure. No, Mr. Just to be clear, the currently administrative function, so the note-taking, the minutes, the meeting preparation for the Conservation Department is not handled by the 20-hour-a-week agent. It's handled by the ZBA's admin assistant. So that's really been, that was somebody who volunteered to help out. It's now been individual.
I understand that, but like I say, his job was sold on the basis that he, they would do all this work and it wouldn't affect their other duties. Now they're saying it affects them. So we're kind of coming around full circle, saying we need an administrative person. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Plasko.
I wonder if Mr. Mizuko could take down his PowerPoint. I think it might be easier to see the members and what's happening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. The presentation was well done, and I appreciate the questions submitted earlier. A couple of things I do endorse segregation of enterprise fund departments, light and water in particular, and the efforts to increase the, our cash of reserve monies in various stabilization of reserve accounts, understanding of course that if we segregation policy, they might be at cross purposes, but we'll do the best we can. I think that, I think it's I think it's well advised. You mentioned the munis increases. There was a big increase because of the news. One part is that, and I couldn't hear too, is that, are we looking at a perpetual thing there?
All right, there's always a small increase usually to software contracts. What it is, is we purchased the software and paid for some of the initial startup costs. As we begin using the different modules, those items then their regular use, ongoing use of the software. So we go live with utility billing this summer and the tax assessing this summer. So those, we need to budget for maintenance for those. We haven't yet because we aren't using them. This current fiscal year, last year, we increased in IT to account for those software suites.
Okay, just a couple of other things. One, as you mentioned, one of the larger departmental receipts is excise taxes. I did see a report on the news today where the auto industry is in, is suffering severely as a result of this Corona business. So we might want to hedge our bets on that. I'll leave that up to you. But future excise revenues might be imperiled, or projections of future if we are looking at flat revenues, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make sure, flat revenues, you know, a year or two out, we're going to have to look at at bolstering our reserve accounts this coming year, anything we can do. And I'll tell you, I know I was, I supported the override. I liked it. I'm glad I voted for it and I'm glad that I did. But the 3% annual increase per side might be in danger. That always was a pretty generous increase. And in good times, we can do it. But if we turn to bad times in fiscal '22, we might have a conversation amongst ourselves and with the school people about a 3.5% projected increase per year. That might not happen, and that will have a great deal to do with how we move forward with collective bargaining, I think. And then finally, oh, the long, the long-term, the light department bond that you mentioned being paid off, is that were you referring, you might have said it again, I'm having trouble hearing someone. Are you referring to the lawsuit responsible, because they're coming off, I think, Mr. Plasko, correct me, fiscal '22 and '23. So that is imminent, both of them, right?
Yes.
We're
Chairman, I'm all set. Thank you.
Yeah, we are getting there. And one other question Mr. Maloney had asked me was the, and I think we'd sent it to the board. The N-Star agreement that we receive about $1.8 million a year as a local receipt, that has been extended through 2031. So, or expires in 2031. So we have at least quite a bit of time with that revenue source.
David.
Yes.
Go ahead, David. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the, I don't want to be a dead horse, but I'm, I'm not satisfied about the planning department. I'm, I'm obviously going to vote for this full budget. But I think there needs to be more discussion about that. Otherwise, I am going to speak out about it when it comes up time for that particular budget. I don't think this is the right way to handle someone. Or I don't ever remember in this past year talking about organizational structure that's changing how the planning department and the Conservation Commission are going to sort of meld together. I don't recall that organizational discussion, but I'll move along. One of your responses
If I could just interrupt for one minute. If I could just interrupt, I wanted to get back to you on that point. What I would suggest that maybe you and Mr. Mizuko offline could have a discussion. And if you feel it hasn't been validated at that time, you're more than entitled to bring it up before town meeting.
That's fine. I would plan, plan on talking to Tony. We I'm not worried. I just want to let the rest of the board members know that I wasn't happy about that particular section of the budget, but the other section I wanted to touch bases on was the Recreation Department. And I brought up the fact that, I know a couple of years ago, the Board Selectmen and the Finance Commission together agreed to form different working groups to do an in-depth analysis of the operations. One was for the airport, one was for the Recreation Department. And both of them made their presentations to the, not just to their individual departments, but to the Board Selectmen and the Finance Commission. And to the best of my knowledge, both were adopted. And the airport comes up with their updated plan every single year to ensure that they remain profitable. And the intent of the Recreation Department was they could never get 100% self-sufficient, but that we would get them from, at that time, they were over 60% taxpayer-funded to under 40%. And that was over a five-year plan that talked about looking at some of the camp programs, which they've done, some of the building costs being updated to, in the fees that they charge per program and stuff like that. And the last sentence in your response to me is that the recommendation of the rec department being only 40% funded has never been adopted by the Board Selectmen. I guess I take exception to that. I was there when the board said yes and moved us forward to, with that goal. And it's not a 40% funded, it's 40% funded by taxpayer cash versus the fees that they charge or what they take in from the different programs, the camps. Some of their items are very profitable, others are not, and so they need funding from the town. But the quest was to get down from above 60 to 40. They made some some substantial progress. So I I would hate to think that we're moving away from that model. And now that we're, and I know this is a tough year, so this is not the year to be complaining about, but as we move forward and we get back to normal, I would hope that that is not off the table.
So my understanding, because we did some research on that, is that the board, we've raised fees on some of these items. I don't believe the board has ever directed that that is the standard for that the rec department has to go under. I defer to Mr. Plasko or Mr. Bishop or Mr. Howard or Mr. Maloney who were on the board, but Christine and I looked through the records and the board adopted some fee changes, but my understanding is there was no directive that rec department budget has to be 40% taxpayer-funded and 60% fee-funded.
Mr. Plasko, you have an answer to that?
I know that I have an answer. I have an opinion, I guess you want to call it. The subject to research, which Mr. Mizuko just inferred that he and Ms. Mulvahill did some. But my recollection is that Finance Commission and Mr. Jar, in particular, did a lot of work. And I did a little oversight on the Selectmen's side of Mr. Mizuko and presented a plan pretty much like he just described. My understanding is that a recollection, as best I can remember, is that we heard that report and we recommended or voted an increase in salaries that year or fees, not salaries, excuse me. But we didn't necessarily adopt a whole plan to hog what the future would be. So I think formally, we only voted that one year's increase. That said, I endorse the idea that we should be continuing to keep these fees updated, if not increased, to get a bigger percentage of the budget taken care of as Mr. Haja described. I've hopped for years on the fees for the fields and other uses, and it seems the only time we get those is when I say something. So I think we do need an administrative eye on these fees, particularly in the rec department, whether they be the field fees or the individual program fees to certainly make sure we don't go backwards and hopefully see if we can go forward a little bit as Mr. Haja described.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mizuko. Is there something you could discuss with, work with Mr. Haja or come out with something? To make it more profitable for the town?
If you'd like us to review the rec fees, again, it's a strange year to take them off. We don't know whether we're going to be in camps or not, but it was probably about two years ago that the last time that we looked at them. So that's certainly worth looking at. And believe me, I believe that we should be getting a healthy amount in certain fees and we should make sure we're always looking at it. Whether you can peg a statutory model to say it should always meet a certain percentage is challenging. We do have, we're working on sort of our comprehensive fee schedule. The idea is that once a year, the board and other boards and committees that charge fees can look at their fees and make a determination. And then that way, it's not every month we're coming up with some other fee we want to look at, that we could take it in the context of a review that happens once a year. If you'd like to do that after town meeting, that would be a good time to do it. We would miss any potential summer fee changes this year, but we do not know if we're going to be running camps or pools this year. So it's we have no idea.
Thank you. Mr. Jar.
Yeah, Tony, don't get me wrong. First of all, the pegging of 40%, it wasn't like, it was the goal. It wasn't saying that we're ever going to get there and we might not be able to get there if we made the fees too high. If we made the fees too high, you lose a drop of participants, and that doesn't do anybody any good. And that's why we picked the five to six-year plan, so that you do increments that can be swallowed every year by, by the participants without saying, oh, how come you guys went up 100 bucks instead of going up 25 dollars, you know, a year or 20 bucks for five years? So the intent was, it was a goal, because we know that in tough times, where people are going to ask that we make reductions, this is a logical place. So the less we can make it taxpayer-funded, the better our role will be. So yeah, we'll, we'll put that on the list to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar. Anything else, Mr. Howard, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mazuko, water meters. Couple of questions on that, if I could.
Sure.
With the flat fee every month on the water meters, is, does that, is that just for a meter, or is that for labor too?
So it's a cost of providing a base bill is what it is, as well as the AMR system. So there's our total water revenue and our total water expenses, and that's part of our total revenue that we balance against the total expenses. However, that, that AMR fee that's on the, on the bill, that revenue actually gets split as a general fund revenue. It probably shouldn't, it depends on how you want to look at it, because that revenue gets split, which causes a little bit of an imbalance in a, an unintentional subsidy from the general fund. So we don't actually collect, we collect 100% of that, but it gets divided up as a local receipt. It really shouldn't be a local receipt. That $650 or so thousand is still programmed in as a local receipt, which is a shared revenue, when it really should be balancing the water and sewer budget.
You're talking about the fee for the meters, right?
Yes.
Oh, well, here's, here's a point on that. My meter was replaced about six months ago. I was told that meters are, go like eight, 10, 12 years normally, that type of range. So if you take my monthly meter fee for even eight years, that's a lot more than a meter costs, a lot, lot more. And for us to say we're going to raise that fee just doesn't seem logical.
So it, the cost, remember that we have 15,000 customers, so it's the cost of the meter, it's the cost of the software to do the reading, there's a lot of costs built in there, the billing software, that's all built into what that base fee is supposed to be, that everyone, the idea is everyone pays a base fee on the meter. So what a factor of the labor into it, you certainly could. The idea of adding to that base fee is we need a per-account fee to start building up that balance, otherwise you're charging it based on the usage, and that's not, you know, that's a less equitable way to do it, to try to build up a fund balance, because what we don't want happening is when water and sewer takes a shortfall, it then comes out of the general fund, it comes out of our free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That fee should have been, should not be a local receipt, but at this point, trying to correct that would cause revenue losses in the general government and the school budget.
Let me just take time off for a technical issue here. Does everybody see Mr. Howard's camera?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it working properly?
Down here, very well, though.
Irons keeps doing a 180-degree twist and turn and.
I mean, it's narrow, but it's, I see him.
He's in a low ratio, he's not in a 16 ratio, he's in a four ratio.
Well, I see Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I see Ms. Mulverhill in the, in the picture all the time, as well as on TV. Just saying, not that I object to it.
Okay, anybody have any other questions regarding our discussion relative to the budget? Mr. Plasko?
I'd like to make a motion that in our capacity as light commissioners, that we approve the light department budget as submitted by the general manager.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the light department budget in our position as light commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so it's 5-0 in the affirmative. So if there's no further questions relative to the 21, 2021 budget, I'll move on to the next article, which will be the Talbot Lot, if everybody remembers.
We're going to do the Capitol, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, continue on.
Would you like me to begin with the FY '21 Capitol Plan?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will go, if you give me just a moment here, into the Capitol Plan, and we'll fix that real quick. Similar with the Capitol, similar with the operating budget, I will go through the Capitol Plan, explain the projects in brief, and then we will, I will be happy to take any questions, and then I'll explain what's being deferred to the fall to keep town meeting moving along. So we will just go ahead and get this started right here. So FY '21 Capitol Plan, highways division, traffic study on construction of traffic signals at Napont Street, Access Road and Ridge Road, Westover Parkway, bridge design and construction. Our pavement management plan is in place, this is the combination of Chapter 90 funds and the funds in the budget totaling about $1.5 million. We will separately be presenting the board an infrastructure plan to borrow, to get caught up on roads, and to get caught up on some water infrastructure as well. Water and sewer division, we have our annual water main lining and cleaning, we typically do, we have been doing a supplement to that. We'd also be proposing to do a sewer relining in the Meadowbrook area. And incidentally, that MWRA loan, we would be seeking, that's one of the few capital items we would be requesting at town meeting, only because we are able to apply for that on an annual basis and receive a zero-interest loan. If we deferred that, we may not be able to get our zero-interest loan. Two projects for the cemetery, replacing the roof and work on the office bathroom and HVAC and electrical work, as we continue to plug along with keeping our cemetery in good shape. The, sorry, it's the fire department, not the Department of Public Works, replacement of the large diameter supply hose, so this is the large hose that we operate with, it's approaching the end of its life cycle. Fairly straightforward. Information technology, these numbers have changed a little bit, this is the original proposal compared to what we're going to be doing, but some upgrades for the normal public schools, including laptops, phone system, which I'll speak about in a minute, some AV technology, wireless access points, some iPads, iPad carts, and school labs and AV work, as well as a, some computer science work. Now, what we'll be proposing is a couple of these IT projects at the Springtown Meeting, because the schools do need them to operate in September. However, in particular, I want you to look at that Voic project. We appropriated about $150,000 or $160,000 several years ago to do a Voic project. The school district was looking to appropriate originally $175,000 for a Voic project. Working between the town's IT department and the school IT department, we believe we can have one system, it'll be a town-wide system, so any phone in town will be able to dial any other phone. And instead of it being about $160,000 appropriation, which was the town's original appropriation, plus that 175, that 175 is down to under $75,000. So by collaborating on the project, we're actually getting something that's about $100,000 cheaper than if we had done two separate projects. So it's a great, great collaboration between our two IT departments, so we're very proud of that.
Nice job.
You're very good to everyone involved, we're saving a lot of money there, and we're going to have one system, so I can actually pick up my phone and dial the superintendent or dial a school principal or any other town employee, whereas right now, we're calling outside to dial some of our own buildings. Desktop replacement and general government, it is time for a desktop refresh, and then some of the public safety infrastructure, couple of servers, decentralized switch and the storage and the related software and licenses. We're including funding for, we have the dollar amount in the summary sheet, for design services for replacement of the exterior track and field turf. So this project would replace the track at the high school and replace the field. They're in daily use, the anticipated lifespan is averaging 10 years, and we are hitting that 10-year mark. This would include design for lights and a concession stand and items, because as we look at the design, we're going to want to design it all at once, whether we build it that way is different, but we may want to do the design and the prep work. Three elementary school projects, the Oldham School floor tile replacement, this would continue the removal of asbestos tile in the main hallway and in some of the classrooms. All the elementary schools would see a replacement of their intercom and clock systems, and all the elementary schools would have their door access systems replaced at once. The public safety building is in need of some work, the building is aging, so included in this year's plan is to update the community room, and as everyone knows, we occasionally use the community room for community programming, but it's a, our primary training and teaching location for certainly police and fire as well. We begin looking at repairs to the apparatus floor, which is starting to crack and show signs of aging. The plymow vent system, which is the fire exhaust system, is in need of replacement. We're looking at a kitchen upgrade, which is really replacing the original kitchen in the building on the fireside. A residential kitchen was originally installed, and I think as the board has been made aware, you really should have a commercial kitchen in a building serving 15 people three days a week, three times a day, seven days a week. This is incidentally one of the projects we believe we can save a lot of money on for the public by having some in-house facilities ability to do some of this work. We're looking at some of the carpet and flooring replacements. Now, one of the questions I often get is, do we really need to design carpet or flooring replacement? And what it involves when you ask for money for design services for carpet and flooring replacement is, you are bringing an expert in to help prepare your bid documents, not so much from a procurement standpoint, but from a technical standpoint, to make sure we're asking for the materials we need and the right amounts that we need, and that the installation will be done correctly. Replacing the fire alarm panel, another building that we believe, another project we believe we can save money once we have a shared facilities department with. And then some cracked ceiling in the apparatus apron in the parking lot, we really need to look at replacing that parking lot at some point. We feel that cracked ceiling will give us another five to seven years, we'd like to look at a full replacement at some point. However, we think that we want to hold off until we, we think the cracked ceiling can get us through. We also want to wait until we look at whether we need any roof, or we certainly know we're working towards HVAC replacement in that building. We do need to, we want to complete that before we look at a complete redo of the parking lot. Pacific Center needs some exterior repair and repointing, we're doing the design of that as now, we'd be looking at design services for the women's locker room and renovating the women's locker room. And not included here was a small change made to the Capitol Plan to include design services to look at the lobby when you walk in on the ground floor. There's a wall there that we don't believe is structural, we want to look at whether or not that could be removed, and we can make a better use of the space. We've been able sort of in-house to do some work on where the engineering offices used to be, so we're able to get great use out of that space, but there is some dead space in between the offices and that room, that there's a wall there, that we'd like to look at some design services to do some work there, to make better use of the space, whether it's a wider lobby, or we can add it to the, that we run some of the children's programming in. Originally, the library looking for interior painting, the building is turning, or the building's certainly not turning 20, the last time the interior renovation happened was about 20 years ago. The airport is looking at three projects, a marshmaster, which is a piece of equipment designed to access some of the inaccessible wetlands, some post-construction monitoring, and an environmental assessment. Most of these projects, as you know, are a 95% match from the federal and state government. The public works fleet, as always, is including a, their vehicle replacements required, a dump truck, a utility truck, two 1 tons, and a assistant superintendent vehicle, which is a pickup. Two vehicles in the cemetery fleet, a truck and a utility vehicle. The fire department will be looking at NC-3, which is the vehicle utilized by the deputy chief, it's a 2007 model, we would replace it with a modern, the updated model. And then the replacement of NA3 ambulance, I did get a question phoned in from one of the board members, we run two primary ambulances, we have a spare, and we have access to a regional spare that is shared among other communities. This has changed slightly, the original from the school plan, but our miscellaneous, the school vehicles have changed slightly. The recreation needs to replace one of their SUVs, we are looking at purchasing a sedan for the council on aging, two trucks for the new facilities department, and we originally were going to do six vans for the school fleet. One of the challenges we have for the school special ed van fleet is a lot of these vehicles were purchased and replaced with American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money in 2008 and '09, so a huge portion of the fleet is turning over, and we need to be able to start addressing that. The school committee eventually settled on four items, four vans at a cost of about $30,000 apiece, we do expect bringing back in the fall the full amount. Those vans are on what we would need to get approval for now, so we can try to get them ready for September. A lot of the school vans are aging quite a bit, the school special ed vans, and they're hitting not only an upper age limit or an upper mileage limit, but having some safety and reliability. And at this point, contracting out some of those services would end up costing us a lot more than it would replacing the vans, so we need to get them up to probably four or five vans a year on average for replacement, to make sure we're continuing to replace and refresh that fleet. The original Capitol Plan as presented, looking at about $10 million worth of work between borrowing, originally, we were going to have a lot of free cash in the plan, we then decided to move to borrowing, we're now moving projects off to the fall. So what we're looking at to do in the fall, and we're doing that for two reasons, one is to preserve our free cash, so we can see how the year closes out, the second is to make sure that town meeting is as short and succinct as possible. And one of the, so we're just doing what we absolutely have to do, we've cleared with all departments, what don't, what can you wait on an approval till the fall for? It's almost everything. To be clear, departments are not saying that they don't need these items, they're saying that they can wait until a fall approval for these items, we still do need them, we don't rush to buy everything right in July with a Capitol approve, Capitol approval, but what we will need is some of the school technology work, which has to get done over the summer, the school vans, because that fleet is in real rough shape, and we need to replace some of the older vans, and then our MWRA loan, which we need to get approval for, because it's a zero-interest loan. We'll be bringing back the supplements and the infrastructure plan, but we don't want to lose out on the ability to get the zero-interest loan. That in brief is the Capitol Plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has. It did receive preliminary approval, sorry, Mr. Maloney, I don't know if you want to jump in as the chair of Capitol Outlay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Maloney.
No, that's fine, Tony, that's fine, and we have, we have talked about, about the two-tier approach for the coming year, a limited number of requests for the spring, and then the rest deferred to the fall until we can see, so we can see what happens with this Corona business in the meantime. I did have a question, when you talked about school technology, did you have in there the computer lab pathway program, roughly $20,000? Because I'm adding the school and technology stuff up to 360, 363,000, you have 340, was that in there?
Well, it should be, so we'll get a final reconciliation.
Okay. And you're right about the van, go ahead.
The total amount has changed around, is depending on which technology project you do and which related the other ones, but we'll, we'll have a final number for the warrant to make sure that the projects that the committee voted on are what we're approving.
Okay. And the reason too, on the, on the special needs vans, of all the categories, subcategories within the auto industry, the one that we're going to, we do see a strong demand is in vans, Amazon, for example, is buying up as many vans as they can get. So we, we do believe that getting sort of in the queue to get, to get the vans that the school department needs, getting in the queue early will pay off. And so that's why we're, we're including that request in the spring. Thank you.
Mr. Plasko, sir?
I had a question on the school vans in particular, I think I saw you post a number of $120,000, talking about some vans, but according to the April 30th, now it rec, the school committee voted to go after $300,000, so are we not together on this?
No, that was a, that was a typo in the record, they were $300,000 each is what the paper said, they are not $300,000 each, they're $30,000 each. The record of the typo.
Thank you. Another question, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I have the floor, the discussion of a sedan for the council on aging, what is, what is that for? I know you mentioned it earlier, too. You're going to need another driver added as well as the sedan?
So what we're looking to do with the sedan is to have a part-time or per diem driver, we do currently have a couple of per diem drivers when our driver is out. We're looking to fund the part-time driver through a combination of two sources, one is we've reallocated some money from the transfer program, we currently spend about $36,000, $37,000 on the transfer program, we receive a little bit of that back as a local receipt, because if somebody purchases a low-cost ticket, a low-cost cab ticket, there's a lot of challenges with the program, it doesn't always, the people who need it and use it like it, but they don't report the highest satisfaction level. It's not uniquely equipped for our senior residents who try to use it. It's also, the budget is always not completely expended, so we've decided to trim that and move that money into a part-time salary line, and then we're able to run some of the per diem drivers through the council on aging grant fund. So the idea is to have a couple days a week a sedan available with a part-time per diem driver to address some of the senior medical transit needs.
all right if you might Mr. Chairman the um items that you did list I'm sorry if I didn't hear you how are we paying for those we use some stabilization we use them uh free cash we appropriating the money in the budget
so i- it could end up changing but right now we're proposing to borrow because we're holding on to our free cash until the fall now in the fall we'll look at it then it maybe we borrow for everything and just hold on to the free cash once we see where we are we might say well if we've got plenty of free cash we should use some depending on where that balance is we know we'll need some uh allocations of free cash for um possibly for emergency expenses or or covering emergency costs but other than that we're trying to hold on to free cash until the fall
all right that's what I wanted to hear because I want to hold on that free cash we want to keep our liquidity to see how we're doing in the fall and whether we need it even for the basic budget all right thank you I'm done Mr. Chairman I appreciate it
uh Mr. Chairman your microphone was uh muted I believe he called him Mr. Hajar but his mic is
yeah okay uh thank you Mr. Chairman um Tony another good presentation on the capital and and Tom for great committee work as well uh it it just to take a moment to congratulate you for putting this together a couple years ago it gives a good idea to um especially our town meeting folks who have to uh look at what's coming down the road they can see what's coming in the next five years so we have a good handle on it and um I am also in favor of holding on to whatever free cash we have until we have a good idea of of what what's gonna happen so uh whatever it is that we put forward obviously from borrowing uh I'm in favor of I do have a question on a vehicle for the second deputy fire chief what are we doing about that
we 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 should allocate a new vehicle uh where usually
it better not be Wilson
somebody could mute
um so that might be something we bring back in the fall just to allocate it but we're we're trying to hold off and get established and then go from it just purchased the um the Marv which is not a admin vehicle but we just want to be slow about growing the size of our fleet
okay thank you Mr. Chairman
you're welcome Mr. Maloney one oh I'm sorry Mr. Maloney go ahead
yeah just one other thing too and uh Mr. Mazuka any borrowing that we do uh in fiscal twenty would show up most likely in fiscal twenty-two right you go through the cycle so I noticed in uh in the overview that our actual the the principal and interest of the debt is paid out of the tax levy is going down quite a bit actually in fiscal twenty-one we understand that it'll that it'll rise and it was planned to rise and now it might rise even more steeply in the out years but that is one good thing about the budget that our debt service is actually declining for a year we are well within our guidelines on that so uh if we have to borrow more than we would have been comfortable with otherwise as a result of the crisis we should be okay and we'll monitor the situation closely thank you
we're well within our debt bar our borrowing limits we actually have a low overall level of debt compared to a lot of other communities so we could borrow more in the fall if we have to and we could borrow for some infrastructure if we had to because we're in a good position and and to Mr. Plasko's point everyone's point about holding on to free cash we come to a September October town meeting well let's see where we are we currently have three and a half million dollars in free cash we need to absorb any revenue losses at the end of the year plus whatever we would generate in free cash are we at eight hundred thousand dollars in October or are we at five point four million dollars in October where we are will depend on what we end up doing but it's a prudent decision
thank you anything else Mr. Mazuka on the capital
no sir
any further questions on the capital okay seeing none uh we can move along to the unfinished business sir
I was just gonna ask do we need a motion to uh move this along to the to town meeting at the appropriate time or or is this I don't know
wouldn't hurt so why don't we uh one Mr. Hajar why don't you make a motion to that effect
I do uh I'm I move that we adopt the uh capital improvement plan as presented for presentation to uh town meeting
a second on that
second second
a motion in a second all in favor
aye
opposed unanimous Mr. Plasko
yes
Mr. Howard
yes
Mr. Maloney
aye
Mr. Hajar
aye
and the chair votes aye so that's five to one in favor of submitting this further on to the Fincom Commission Finance Commission uh and with that done we'll move on to number one under unfinished business last Tuesday night we had a presentation from our director of public work slash town engineer Mr. Mark Ryan relative to the asphalting of certain parking lots town on parking lots across the town there seemed to be some questions about the Talbot lot uh which runs between Clade Street and Manhattan Street and we asked him to come back with a secondary plan to which he did I think we all have that in front of us drawing of the architectural plant any questions on that at all
not here I think it looks pretty good Mr. Chair
anything else Mr. Hajar
I I just I I think it looks great Mark uh and the team did a great job increasing the number of parking spaces by sixteen without removing the the trees uh um on the front side of the parking lot which is good I think it'll make for a better plowing um and I'm hoping as Mr. Plasko talked about earlier that we once this is done that we have our regulations enforced so that uh the back part of that parking lot doesn't get beat up in a shorter period of time
I just have one comment uh I think we've approved upon that rear section of the parking lot where we usually find uh unregistered motor vehicles abandoned motor vehicles trucks of all sorts and sizes and it's not really utilized for the purposes intended so it looks like it might have a better usage the way it's laid out now I think it comes down to if we do have a problem back there with unregistered motor vehicles etc and I think Mr. Plasko will agree with me on this it becomes a uh a police matter for enforcement with that said Mr. Plasko
yeah I uh just reemphasizing have the concern that we're gonna spend all this money fixing up this parking lot and if we don't have enforcement we've got a rack there and times the track and the trailer and the weight of that is really broken up that parking in that back area if you look if you drive through there you'll see where that CPW has had to put down a lot of patches and it's all in the areas where that truck parks despite the fact that we have regulations overnight parking so we do need enforcement
that's correct and we'll uh get together with the police chief and look at appropriate signage if there is no signage and we'll go forth from that point but again I think the answer to the question is enforcement
absolutely
thank you uh so is everybody satisfied with the uh the Talbot lot as it stands this evening
it's definitely an improvement Mr. Chairman thank you
okay could I get a vote to accept that
some of
second
second
motion in a second to prove the plan that was submitted for this evening's meeting all in favor
aye
opposed unanimous Mr. Hajar
aye
Mr. Maloney
aye
Mr. Howard
aye
Mr. Plasko
aye
and the chair votes yes okay the next item on our unfinished business would be our response from the ABCC the alcoholic beverage control commission submitting final approval for a change of manager application from Patucci's Restaurant LLC from Ryan Lynn hat to Ben Lottie so that's been approved uh by the have a motion for information in a second all in favor
aye
opposed unanimous Mr. Plasko
yes
Mr. Howard
yes
Mr. Maloney
aye
Mr. Hajar
aye
and the chair votes in the affirmative so that brings us up to the managers update
thank you Mr. Chairman given that I gave two presentations already I will forego giving any update unless the board has any specific questions I'd be more than happy to answer them
one question Mr. Mazuka did you want to talk about the upcoming uh election
absolutely so we are planning our I do yeah I haven't I almost forgot we have an election on June eighth and we're planning for a no-touch election so I'll go through what that uh exactly means uh we're not sure whether you'd be as you're driving or as you walk in but you'll be given your own PPE kit for the election we have secured enough supplies so that everyone gets their own kit this is what it looks like so it includes a mask gloves and your own pen and we do ask that you give the pen back but you're gonna get your own voting pen you're going to get two gloves should you want gloves we recommend
left and a right
what's that
a left and a right
well now the Republicans are getting two right gloves and the Democrats are getting two left gloves um and everyone everyone will be given their own mask so that they can mask up now you may be wearing your own mask uh into the election anyway which we would certainly uh ask that you do so you'll be given a kit as you gone in as you go in there'll be sanitizer stations in the uh in the entrance and the exit you'll go in you'll check in the poll workers will be behind a plastic shield for lack of a better term we're having those built now they'll be mobile they'll sit in front of the the tables there'll be about a six or eight inch gap in between the bottom of the uh plastic shield and the table so they can hand you your ballot through that they will of course have PPE you'll proceed to your voting booth you'll vote like normal uh the custodial staff we'll clean the booths in between usage you'll go you will exit as you normally do and then we'll probably have a slightly different exit path out for some of the uh the auditor or the gyms that we're using so that you can deposit your PPE if you're done with it in specific bins to be uh disposed of you could keep your mask and gloves if you want to we'll ask that everyone return the pens because we'd like to use them but there'll be a bin there where you can drop it so as you're going out you can drop what you need to and then you'll be able to exit we're lucky that it'll be in June as long as it's not raining we're gonna try to have doors open so there's no need to touch or open doors so we believe it will be an entirely no-touch election it will be safe it will be sanitary and it will be on June eighth you will vote at your normal voting location that being said you can always call the town clerk's office and get an absentee ballot and we certainly encourage everyone to do that if you want but the polls will be open on June eighth and it will be a safe and sanitary no-touch election and you even get to keep your PPE if you'd like
and there should be some type of receptacle upon exiting the building to deposit of your rubber gloves if you so choose to do that rather than throw them on the ground
well we strongly encourage people not to litter we will issue fines for littering but um there will be appropriate receptacle for the gloves
thank you is that it
yes unless there's any other questions on how the election's going to uh operate or any of the mechanics of it
anything else from anyone all right Mr. Plasko
thank you uh Maloney and Mr. um Mazuka just covered the uh part about the election that I was gonna ask about but also I want to emphasize one more time that it's Monday June eighth but uh in person voting uh as Mr. Mazuka just said it's a regular place of voting and that uh anyone who has any concern the in-person vote may request that the ballot at the town clerk these are like putting in a letter request or an email request to the town clerk and they'll make that available in a timely manner so you can get at voting without worrying about the in-person voting the other thing I want to mention is we I know we've talked a little bit about at least the general manager and I have um we likely need a special town meeting but only for closing out the current fiscal year any transfers or uh surely just that we might have in any of those couches that need to be uh balanced before the end of the current fiscal year so it might only be three or four articles to cover all those needs but all that uh I would say based on our posted schedule no later than June second and I want to put that out there as a date we expect to close a warrant and we can work on the have the manager whoever work on the items that will be included
that fine with everybody
yes
yes
okay let's get to our personal agendas Mr. Plasko do you have anything this evening
sorry that was it thank you
okay Mr. Howard anything
nothing nothing further this evening Mr. Chair thank you
Mr. Maloney
yes Mr. Chairman just a couple of things I'll be as brief as I can but today is May fifth and sixty-five years ago today the German Democratic public was founded a decade after the end of World War Two students do not know about the Cold War period and the and the the Russians that occurred in Europe and between the US and the Soviet Union in those years but it was a dramatic time in this country's history and indeed in the history of the world for those who like to do additional work in their study of history they might look up the name of the first Ger- Chancellor of West Germany a man who was terribly important in the development of the Cold War and our success to the at the conclusion of it but was not well known to Americans his name is Conrad Adenauer he was the Chancellor of the German Democratic Republic AKA West Germany from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen sixty-three or four De Arta one of the great men of the twentieth century not well known anymore secondly Mr. Chairman uh this coming Sunday May tenth marches marks the fiftieth anniversary of one of the greatest things that ever happened in human history if you look over my shoulder that shoulder and you might see there's a reflection there but you see a photograph of Bobby Orr on May tenth nineteen seventy Bobby Orr scored the winning goal uh to carry the Bruins to their Stanley Cup victory over the St. Louis Blues this coming Sunday marks the fiftieth anniversary of that great and blessed event uh and uh so we should be happy about that in addition to which on that day nineteen seventy as on this coming Sunday May tenth was Mother's Day and is Mother's Day and for all those mothers in the world and I am one of those unfortunately who will for the first time in life not be able to celebrate Mother's Day with his or her mother but for all those mothers who are still with us and are gone God bless you all thank you for everything you do and are doing particularly in this difficult time here in our country and uh God bless you all thank you so much Mr. Chip
thank you sir and if I could just touch on fifty years ago I believe it was fifty years ago yesterday the tragedy of Kent State University where four students were shot and killed by National Guard uh that was a travesty in the uh system at that time uh with that said there was also a song and where they mentioned four dead in Ohio and I forget the name of the group I think it was Crosby Still's Nash but that was fifty we'll have a debate on that after off camera but uh that again was fifty fifty years ago um if you have nothing else Mr. Hajar
yes uh too I just want to echo uh Mr. Maloney's comments about Mother's Day um for a lot of us that are present today but our own uh wives or significant others that we have uh it even in today's environment of covid nineteen we still can wish them and celebrate Mother's Day with them um either near or far congratulations to all them uh can't say enough good things about the the mothers of the world uh second I pay absolute reverence uh Tom to uh Bobby Orr the greatest hockey player to have a lace skates in the NHL um and he deserves all the accolades um my last comment Mr. Chairman is the um uh a desk question about uh five C small cell sites that we need to have as a board so that we have regulations in place before an applicant submits something and we won't have the controls in place that we need to um because we won't be guided by our own they'll be guided by what the FCC has a has approved which are a lot more lenient than I think what we want to do so um I Jim Collins gave us a couple months ago um a draft packet from their attorney that drafted some regulations um I know I gave feedback to uh to them we went back and forth a couple times and um Bernie Cooper was uh good enough to have Maya input insurance information and Caris North from Murphy SC Junior Lahane provided some input as well so while it is not final for approval um I I would like to uh with uh someone present other than myself uh go over the the draft document because before we can finalize I think we want input from someone within that industry that's not working for the wireless companies that can ensure that along with uh legal language that we are protected uh smartly business-wise um and there are a couple of firms out there that we can go over which one might fit best for for Norwood um but I would definitely request that this be put on the agenda for our next meeting
uh one of one of the reasons I uh have held off of this a little bit because after conversation with the two of our town councils uh they are working diligently on it not only for the town of Norwood but other towns that they serve and they are not ready at this point in time sometime in the next several weeks hopefully it'll be moving forward I also talked I also talked to Mr. Collins and he has had applications come in, but they've been fended off for the moment. And I understand your argument about we have to be ready and we have to have something to fall back on. But, uh, he does not declare this as time sensitive at the time. And as far as any type of vendor coming in to help us on this whatsoever, uh, I don't know if there's any procurement issues, whether something has to go out the bed or whatever else. So, uh, I am not objecting to it. I would just like to wait until we have finality from our town council. Anything else from anyone?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I can, we're not gonna have finality until there's some piece of information that are not necessarily legal related, but are design and distance related, that we would want someone in the industry to tell us what makes the most sense and how far away to keep these radio frequency devices away from residential dwellings. That's not a legal matter. That's a, an industry matter. And we want someone that's not associated with any of the wireless companies to come in and tell us. So I wasn't looking to, uh, have a, any submission finalized, but the board needs to understand what the key issues that remain and how we can enlist the services of, uh, a vendor, whether through the procurement, uh, process or not, to review our document and make some further recommendations so that we do have a final document at some point in the near future for us to vote on.
Uh, again, I, I'm not disagreeing with what you say, but I would feel a lot more comfortable with legal advice because if some of these vendors come to the town of Norwood and something happens on a pole, and I want to be perfectly clear that I want to be, I don't want to be held accountable. The town of Norwood will be held accountable for any injuries that have been incurred, so on its own. With that said, uh, I have no problem with, uh, bringing a vendor forward if you choose to do that and have other people present such as, uh, maybe town council and, uh, Mr. Mizuka and Mr. Collins from the light department, just so we get a whole spectrum of information all at once here. And we can move forward based on that. So we'll put that on for the 19th and we'll work out the, uh, the circumstances of who will and will not be here.
Thank you.
Mizuka, any comments on it?
Uh, no, it'll go through its town council approval process and then we'll run it through procurement, see where we need to go. It, uh, needs to get taken care of at some point, but we can, uh, target the 19th as a date to have something to the board.
Thank you. If that's okay with you, Mr. Hajar, do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and lastly, I guess I want to wish everybody, all the mothers, not everybody, but everybody's mother, a very happy Mother's Day this coming Sunday. I also want to give out, and from the board, this is coming from the board, a deep business's serious condolences to Tricia Ralph, who works, uh, alongside of Mary Lou Folen in the town clerk's office. Her father-in-law passed away this, this recent weekend and she is an exemplary, exemplary employee. She does a great job and I just want her to know that the board acknowledges, uh, her, her loss and her family and we send our condolences. With that said, is there anything else on the board?
Motion adjourned?
A motion, and a, motion to adjourn and a second. Uh, the next scheduled meeting will be May 19th, which is two weeks from tonight. The reason I say scheduled, because if something should develop that has to be dealt with immediately, we will reconvene at a particular time, giving a 48 hour notice to the public to do so. And we will, uh, we'll have a meeting if necessary between now and the 19th. With that said, I thank you all for watching and, uh, good evening.
But you need to vote on the German.
I have a vote?
Aye.
And I have a second. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll return, if not sooner, we'll return on May 19th. Thank you all.